I'd like to welcome all of you to the August 19, 2024 Wilson County Commission Meeting. And thanks to all of our guests for being here tonight, and encourage you to come back at any time that you can. At this time, we have... At this time... It's as loud as it can be, I think. At this time, we have Commissioner Denton to have some prayer and pledge for tonight. Hey Cory, can you cut me up? You gonna cut me up?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Denton.
Thank you. We have two men tonight that I wanted to bring. When I knew he was gonna say the pledge, one man came to my heart, and that was Frank Layhoo. He is a career Marine. He's been a real patriot. He loves the Lord Jesus Christ, and he loves this country. He's brokenhearted like most of us are about what we're seeing, but I thank him for his service, and he'll lead us in the pledge tonight. And then we have a new preacher in our town. He's actually, shouldn't be even new now. He's already had... He's been here a little over a year, I think, year and a half. And his name is Drew Eses, and he is the pastor down at what we used to know as Forest Avenue Church of God. And now it's the ministry center, and we're so grateful to have him. Brother Lee tells me he's doing a tremendous job, and he will, to fill his shoes, he'll do a tremendous job. So he'll be leading us tonight in prayer, and so you join us as they do.
Please rise.
Let us pray together. Almighty God, we come before you, and we recognize that every good and perfect gift comes from you. Lord, we give you thanks for allowing us to live in a place as amazing as Wilson County. We give you thanks for our neighbors, our fellow citizens, that make this place as incredible as it is. And we give you thanks, Lord, for all of these leaders that you have raised up and brought into this room this evening. Lord, we ask that you would give them the wisdom to make the right decisions on all the business before them today. We also ask, Lord, you'd give us all the vision to see beyond where we are to the future of what will come. And beyond all of that, Lord, most importantly, we ask that you would give us a heart that would see the things of God, that we, Lord, would ask for your will to be done on earth, here in Wilson County, as it is in heaven. Overshadow everything that's said and done here, we ask, in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, let it be so. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, men. Thank you, Pastor Denton. If you will please press yes on your panel to record your presence at tonight's meeting. Mr. Fields is not going to be with us tonight, and Mr. Commissioner Bernard is not going to be either, he said. Okay. We ready? 23. Commissioner Denton.
Present.
Got you. Twenty-three present and two absent. This time we'll do Historia Moment. Commissioner McFarland.
Mr. Mayor, members of the county commission, friends, neighbors, and their audience, I'm simply gonna give a little quick update on our 225th project. For those that are watching and perhaps don't know, on October the 26th of 1799, Wilson County became a county. And this year is the 225th anniversary commemoration of that. We will have a doodah, if you will, at Fairgrounds, celebrating that. Music, eats, foods, displays, photographs, whatever. We've developed this particular poster about the event. These will be ceremonial posters, be purchasable out there, and on the back of them, it has the history of the churches and the schools, and on and on and on. We also have, for the 24th and 25th, when the fourth graders come out from both city and county, they get a little passport doodah like this, and they go around to the different station, they get it stamped, and they get back to where they're going to depart the area, we'll have one of these posters, and eight by 10, or 11 and a half, or whatever it is, miniature for them to take home as a souvenir from going through all that. In addition to that, there'll be a monument dedicated out there. We all call that part of our world the Fairgrounds. It ain't the Fairgrounds, it's the James Ward Agricultural Center. And the monument will be dedicated as we know it right now, and we're still, we're doing a lot of work, a lot of planning, and we're gonna meet the fifth next month in this room and try to get the execution part of the plan done, plan, work's planned. And that part of the ceremony out there, hopefully the governor's gonna be there. And we're going to not only dedicate that officially to James Ward Center, we're going to have a little something about this building we're in. This is a reprint, and there's some on the table, and I think each one of you commissioners have one on this, of the original program for the dedication of the building we're sitting in. This is our fifth courthouse in Wilson County, and this one is 56 years old. And one of the gentlemen on here who did the invocation, and I got to talk to him, is still alive. And we're gonna try to get him there to say a few words and lay us in prayer as we start that off. So I'm just trying to catch us up, let the commissioners, those here, know what's going on with this. The prints of four of the commissioners have been sold, the money has been given to Aaron Maynard for deposit, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate that. This time we'll have public comment period from anybody in the back. If you hear about the rezoning, there are three of those tonight, and then there are three resolutions on codes and zoning. We'll do those later, so anyone wishing to speak on things other than that, this is your time to speak, if anybody wants to speak. CNN will close public comment period, and we'll move on to report from the Steering Committee. Commissioner Brown.
Steering Committee met on July 15th and August 8th. If you have a copy in your packet, it will be received and filed.
Here a second.
Say it.
Any discussion? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Brown.
We have a request for amendment to the agenda. I'd like to turn it over to Commissioner Gentry.
Yes, thank you very much. I make a motion, we adopt, we make an amendment to the agenda to add four judicial commissioners, three reappointments, and one new appointment.
Here a second.
Right.
All right. All in favor, say aye for the amendment.
Aye.
And now we approve the agenda. Commissioner Brown, make that motion.
Motion to approve the amended agenda.
Say it.
Any discussion?
I've got him.
Commissioner Reeves.
My buttons are not working. I just had a question. I know we just had the Judicial Committee, and there was mention, I know that the Budget Committee and Judicial have both passed a copier contract for the judicial commissioners, and I believe it was mentioned that it wasn't actually on the agenda itself. Is that correct? So can we amend the agenda to add the copier contract?
We don't have a resolution for that. That's probably my fault, but we don't have a resolution. Any rules say all resolutions have to be in writing, so I would suggest we move that one till September.
Okay.
Okay.
And we'll do that.
Any other discussion? Commissioner.
I think we probably need to amend the special recognition. We'll need to help someone out at this time, for Ms. Williams.
Need to remove it?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Got a motion to remove the special recognition. Here a second. Second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, we'll go back, motion to as amended agenda?
Motion.
Now here a second. Any discussion now? CNN, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is adopted as amended? There is no consent agenda, I believe. Are they, Commissioner Brown?
Yes, sir.
Special recognition was going to be by Commissioner Franklin and Commissioner Weathers. Ms. Pam is under the weather, and so she's not gonna be with us tonight, and we'll get her maybe next month, hopefully. And at this time, we will have a public hearing for land use and rezoning changes, and I'll ask Mr. Tom Assures to come forward. I need a motion to go out of session. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will have a public hearing before the Wilson County Commission tonight to hear land use amendments and rezoning requests for the following items. Application has been made by Free Hill Ventures LLC, with permission from property owners Truist Bank as trustee for the Janelle W. Williams property, John Blackwell, Jonathan Dougdale, and James and Cindy Bilbury, Scott Meyer and Nancy Porter, who have applied jointly requesting to rezone their property from agricultural A1 to planned commercial C4 zoning. The property is further referenced as Wilson County Property Map 137, parcel 35.01, Wilson County Property Map 141, parcels 2.02, 2.04, 2.15, and from rural residential to planned commercial C4, Wilson County Property Map 140, parcel 7.02, and Wilson County Property Map 141, parcels 1, 2.11, and 2.13. The combined parcels for this request containing 180.7 acres. We'll also be having a public hearing tonight for application that has been made by property owners Joe and Jessica Clark and Diane Jurnell, who have applied jointly requesting the rezoning of properties from A1 agricultural to C3 highway commercial. The properties are located at 3571 Murphysboro Road and 3625 Murphysboro Road, and contain approximately 13.96 acres. And combined, those properties are further referenced as Wilson County Map 114, parcels 35 and 35.20. Finally, we have an application that has been made by Brian Keith of K&amp;A Land Surveying, representing property owner Sue Harris, requesting the rezoning of property from A1 agricultural to C1 neighborhood commercial. The properties are located at 4695 Carthage Highway and 4721 Carthage Highway, and contain approximately 4.16 acres. And they are further referenced as Wilson County Map 61, parcels 2 and 2.01. Copies of all three of these rezonings have been on file and available at the Wilson County Planning Office for perusal or review, which is downstairs here at the courthouse at 228 East Main Street. Anyone requesting to come forward, requesting to speak on any one of these rezonings or amendments is requested to come forward at this time, and I believe the mayor will...
What we'd like to do, if we could, since we have three, and then we'll also talk about the three resolutions after we do these three. People in the back that are wishing to speak, we'd ask you to state your name and address for the record. There's a three-minute time limit on your conversation, and we'll do these in order if we can. So if you want to speak about the Free Hill Ventures property, the 180 acres property located on McQuarrie and Couchwell Pike, land use amendment going from high density to residential to commercial center, as well as rezoning the property from A1 to commercial 4, if you would speak at this time for the commission to hear you. Anybody wishing to speak on that property, will you step forward and just to the back podium, state your name and address for the record, and your time is three minutes, please.
Yes, the commissioners, my name is Joe Davis, and we live at 4040 Vesta Road. Lived there 27 years, and right across the fence from the proposed rezoning. The people have talked to us and made us some concessions to keep, if possible, their development 200 feet from our property line, and leave a couple rows of trees in the big woods back there. Burms eight to 10 feet. We've got two horses that we train at home, and they agreed to pay for boarding and training during the clearing and construction, and keep the in-and-out road, if possible, as far south away from our property, and to make the sewer line come as close to our property in case we had to go sometime and maybe even have a clean out there, maybe. And then I have some concerns. It's contrary to the current use plan. If you let them, are you gonna have other people that want to do the same? You gonna do them too, or not? But the sewer, the sewer pumping stations, I've been told, are at or near capacity, even though the sewer's got capacity. And that, there's a big orange, I assume it's an auxiliary pump, down at Stewart's Ferry now, and they are working on that. I don't know whether, not the auxiliary, but the main pump. I don't know whether they're just fixing it, or whether they're redoing it, or what. But they said they were at or near capacity, the pumping stations. I got this from Ms. Santana, and that they all needed to be updated, and that would cost millions. Several things are already approved for out here, or else not being used much, are used much at this time. The Thorntons, of course, are going across the other side of the 840. The Nissan warehouse, that they worked on day and night, doesn't seem to be used right before you get to Loves on the right. And behind the Brothers Bickers Church, that warehouse, I think it may be in the process of being rented now, but it's been empty for a couple of years. The people, which I think they've told me it's not unusual, are not sure, or don't have a contract with the tenants yet, and they won't have it till they get rezoned. So they don't really know about what the traffic's gonna be, or how much sewer use they're gonna need, until they obviously get things signed up. The way I understand it now, there's no drain. The water behind where Mr. Job's house is now, doesn't, it's not proposed to drain to anywhere. And these pipes that go under the intersection, they drain both ways, I assume. So if the water does get high down there, it would at least slow down the flow coming from the north, which already has drainage problems now.
Sir, your three minutes is...
Okay. The other problem is the trucks first, intersection the way it is now. And I do have one more suggestion that might help the residents, if you're for this, is let them do the bridge first, do the intersection later, and route the trucks to go across the bridge. And so that would cut down on the traffic flow at the, what's the four-way now? It'd cut down on the danger of the trucks coming through there, cut down on the blind hill that you can't see over, and the trucks go right on out through there, where I think it would affect less residents and go on to a commercial road, where the intersection's used a lot less than it is at Loves.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Estes, Free Hill Ventures, 2925 Berry Hill Drive. We're glad to be here. Last time we was here, we did a lot of talking, and then we was asked to do some studies. Those studies have been completed, submitted to staff, reviewed with Commissioner Hobbs and Commissioner Haskell. Our project is split between the two commissioners. The McQuarrie Road is the boundary between the two commissioners. As I stated before, we have worked long and hard with not just the neighbors, but the commissioners and the staff. We've agreed to improve McQuarrie Road, replace the bridge, enlarging it by multiple times along McQuarrie Road, which will, and we've talked to the Corps to improve the conditions downstream of the bridge, to, at a minimum, keep the flooding off McQuarrie Road, and then we're raising the intersection along Vista, rerouting it. And Mr. Davis is correct, there's a large berm that sits there, it's not the Nissan building, it's Big Rig where it sits, that blocks the full water until it reaches a certain height. So we're gonna raise the road to keep the road from flooding, so that emergency vehicles and others can travel. However, and we're putting enough drainage structures onto the road to not increase any flooding issue, but it won't solve the flooding at this point. There are a lot of discussions ongoing, and they'll continue past this zoning if this goes forward tonight, but that is not a overnight fix. As far as all the other improvements, they're being paid for by the developer, by us, and they're being done on the front end, and I think that's good, not just for our project, but for the county. And as far as all the other stuff, Mr. Davis said, he's correct, we've made quite a few... We want to help them however we can, so we've made quite a few, I wouldn't say concessions, but changes to accommodate their needs as much as possible. And so we would ask for approval tonight, and I'd like to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the McQuarrie and Couchwell property? Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Amanda Wright. I live at 1738 Vesta Road and have for the last 15 years. I am opposed to the plan as it is proposed. I'm not opposed to the development in itself per se, but the traffic plan that accompanies that development. Since the last commissioners' meeting, I myself have had multiple close calls with a semi truck and trailer almost striking my vehicle. Last Friday, I was actually on Couchwell Pike and had to put it in reverse to keep one from hitting the front of my car. I've also had them pull directly out in front of me when I was, had a horse trailer behind me, and literally had to slam on the brakes and sit in the road until they got out. Luckily, I've never had a horse that was injured, but I mean, that could definitely happen. As I stated at a previous meeting, the exit ramps at 840 and Couchwell Pike already struggle with the volume of traffic at certain times of the day. Without changes to those ramps, which are currently not proposed, additional development and the traffic associated with those developments are only going to exacerbate the traffic problem that already exists. My greatest concern with the proposed plan is safety, or in my opinion, the lack of safety. The proposal has the traffic from Vista and McQuarrie turning on to Couchwell Pike in a turn. My concern is that the proposed intersection at Couchwell Pike and Vista is a disaster waiting to happen without some kind of infrastructure in place to force the semi trucks and traffic to slow down. A three-way stop would be one solution. A roundabout would likely be a better solution. In fact, a roundabout would also be a solution for the lost truck drivers that come to the four-way stop, and I probably at least once a week see them trying to do a three-point turn in the four-way stop. A roundabout would offer those truck drivers a safe way to turn around and get back the direction that they were going, and even sometimes they turn around in our driveway. Commissioners, I urge you all to require the developer to come up with a safer traffic solution for the residents of Wilson County, and to include the resident's input. I also encourage you not to trade the rare inconvenience of flooding for an everyday traffic nightmare. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Roy Denny, and I'm a lifelong Vesta resident, except for the few years I was out with Uncle Sam playing in the Army. Tonight, I want to address a couple of issues that, to my knowledge, have not been addressed, and I have discussed them with the manager down at the Gladeville Utility District. As most of you know, Gladeville water comes from underground rivers going through the limestone rock. Now, understand that the developer has said that there's not gonna be any blasting on the north side of McQuarrie Road, but they're gonna blast on the south side of McQuarrie Road. And I'm gonna say that doesn't make any difference to us. Unless you stood out there and watched those blast waves shake houses a mile and a half away from the blast, you have no idea what it's like to blast out there. When they put in the racetrack, I'm about a mile and a half from the racetrack, and it rattled the windows, it rattled the cabinets, it rattled the dishes in the cabinets. That limestone rock out there will conduct blast, and they need to have something more than, oh, we're just gonna move the blast 200 yards south. There are also two major water lines that run along McQuarrie Road that will have to be moved, or they'll have to move the road. I haven't heard anybody address this. You know, if y'all go to disturbing a 36-inch water main, it will cause more problems, and I think that that needs to be taken seriously into consideration. I asked at the last meeting that I could be considered in some of the discussions. The developers decided not to talk to me, which I guess makes sense from their point. I don't, they're saying that the pipes they put under the road, where they're gonna raise it up, are gonna be enough. I don't know how big those pipes are. I do know how much water comes down through there at high speed, and they're gonna have to do a lot to convince me that their pipes are big enough to hold the water back. The last issue I want to talk about is if their blasting does damage the Gladeville water system, and if the pipes they put under that road do not do the job, are they gonna be required to come back and fix it? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nathan Quinn, 2925 Berry Hill Drive, here with Free Hill Ventures. Just want to try to address some of the concerns that some of the residents brought up, that we've, we've spent a lot of time going through extensively with county engineering. We met with the road commission as well. We've met with Gladeville Utility District on the water, concerns that they have, and I'll try to move through these in my allotted time. The traffic issues in the current conceptual plan that y'all have in front of you tonight, showing the intersection improvements is just that, it's conceptual. We're committed, in our conditions of approval, to coming up with a solution that works for the local residents, for the county road superintendent, and all parties that have to utilize that in a safe manner. So that, we're committing to that. What you have in front of you is not the final say, and ultimately, the county has the final say in what that intersection design will be, and that was at the behest of both commissioners involved in this rezone and land use amendment. The blasting, we're committing to only blasting on the west side, which is the closest to 840, so between 840 and McQuarrie, and we're a significant distance away from Gladeville Utility District, and we discussed this with them as well in our meeting. They didn't raise any concerns at our meeting that if we kept the blasting on the west side of the road, that they would have any concerns that we need to be aware of, and I'll leave it at that. The water mains that were brought up, yes, they're correct. There's a water main on both the west side and the east side of McQuarrie currently. The larger is on the west side, closer to 840. All of our widening improvements that we're proposing, the 29 feet from the bridge all the way up to Loves, we're gonna widen that entire section. We can, we can complete all of our widening without having to touch that larger main by moving to the east. And the main that's on the east is an eight-inch main. It's a loop system, and we'll be able to turn off, and this is confirmed with Gladeville Utility District, turn the valves off at either end and safely relocate that during construction without impacting that larger main, or impacting services to residents. The flooding concern that they brought up at the intersection, we had a flood engineer extensively study that. We're committing to a no-rise, meaning that we're not gonna raise the water at all upstream of the intersection, and we've sized that appropriately, and we'll continue to work through that with the county commissioners, county engineering, and county staff. I think I've addressed everything. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Anyone else wishing to speak on that property?
Promise I won't go over. Jeff Tonk, 7364 Poplar Hill Road, Watertown. I just wanted to reiterate a few things about this property. At this time, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 11 of the properties involved in this are under contract with the buyers. Just so you know, what they have done to go about trying to alleviate any problems that may come up, they've tried to address that and take... One of the properties I didn't speak about last time was the house on the corner that floods, and they are buying that, and they'll tear that down when they bring that road in. So it will alleviate that problem of him coming up here, for sure. The property taxes, I know I don't have to highlight the increase in the property taxes that will be raised, but I'm just gonna mention it right now, on four of the properties, it's, you're getting $8,000 a year. It'll increase somewhere around to $651,000 a year in property taxes, just off several of these properties. The improvement of the intersection, as was mentioned, for fire trucks, but also for school buses, and also that subdivision that's gonna be located on down Vesta Road. Somewhere between the neighborhood of $5 million and $10 million in improvements is what is on the table and offered to the county in improvements for that area. And that's, that's all I got. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the McQuarrie Couchville property? CNN, we'll move forward now to the Joe Jessica Clark and Diane Jurnell property, 13.96 acres, located on 3571 and 3625 Murfreesboro Road. Rezoning the property from A1 to C3 highway commercial, and the land use is going from rural residential to commercial. Anyone to speak on that property tonight?
Hello, my name is Jessica Clark. I live at 3625 Murfreesboro Road. All around us has went commercial, industrial. We actually, my husband retired from the post office, and this was supposed to have been our retirement home. When we built, there was a farm across us, field beside us. I think the zoo, like a zoo, Event Barn was already there. Myron and Green Roofing was already there, but that's on the road that's behind us, old Murfreesboro Road, which we do have entrance and exit on both roads. Within, we built in 2019. This is 24. We're, our house and our neighbor are the only two houses out there other than one more, and I don't even know if anybody lives there. That is not commercial or industrial or light industrial. This, to us, was our opportunity to go ahead and go commercial because everybody else around us is. So go ahead and go commercial and sell, and actually go somewhere where we can build a retirement home for us. I have no problem with anybody around us being commercial. Everybody's been great toward us, other than some smells from the Hydravac place, which is no longer there anymore. Another company bought that place out. The industrial part across from us, it gets extremely noisy all hours of the night. I don't care if it's 3:30 in the morning, you're going to hear trucks coming in and out, in and out, in and out. It is industrial from my understanding, which used to be a farm. But my thing is, I would really like this opportunity for me and my husband to go ahead and get approval to go C3 so we could sell as well as the property beside us. It would actually help everybody around there. We've actually had people from the event, like a zoo Event Barn that spoke at the last meeting we was at, and they were agreeable with it. The only thing they asked was like a line of trees to separate because they take pictures and stuff out there, and our properties are very close to backing up to them, which I completely understand. Whoever bought would understand that. So I mean, it's not like we don't have approval from everyone around us, but we would really like y'all's approval as well. So, thank y'all.
Thank you.
I'm Diane Jurnell, and I live at 3571 Murfreesboro Road. And I, like Jessica, we bought our property, I've only been there about three years. I thought we had 10 or 12 years before we were surrounded, but shortly after I got there, we're surrounded. When you pull out of my driveway, you're looking, we're looking at the industrial auction of heavy equipment. And as Jessica said, it doesn't matter if it's 3:00 in the morning or 7:00 or noon or 1:00 in the morning. All you hear are Jake brakes, tractor trailers, people pulling in, unloading equipment. It just, it's not a place for a family to live. And we would just appreciate your support with. We really should be industrial, but I understand that everybody wants to see site plans, and I get all that. But we would just appreciate your support with commercial zoning because we're just not welcome there anymore. Residential housing is, it's not what, what belongs there. And as Jessica said, my neighbor, the neighbor to the left of me, they never mow their yard. It looks like nobody lives there. It's, it's awful. And it just, that needs to change. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on the property on Murfreesboro Road? CNN, we'll move on then to the Brian Keith Land Survey and application of 4.16 acres property located on 4695 and 4721 Carthage Highway. Rezoning property going from A1 to C1 neighborhood commercial. Land use going from rural residential to commercial. Anyone here to speak on that property?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Brian Keith, KNA Land Survey and 1012 Sparta Pike. I'm here representing the Harris family. Most of you are familiar with this piece of property. This is the Cooksey store on Highway 70. It's been there since I was a kid. And, and it's also been zoned A1 that whole entire time, too. So our request tonight is to, to rezone this to commercial, which is the use that it's being used for. So I'm going to be very brief. That's about all I've got, just to kind of make that clarification. So we'd appreciate the, the vote for this rezonation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brian. Anyone else wishing to speak on this property? Okay, Tom, can we go now to the three resolutions that we have denied in front of you to see if we have public comment on that before we go out?
Yes, sir.
Go back into session, please.
We also have, the, the following three items are as follows, and they, and they are, have also been advertised for public hearing. An amendment to the Wilson County zoning ordinance consisting of a resolution that amends the definition and related criterion for determining the existence of an allowable home occupation as opposed to other uses within the Wilson County zoning resolution. That's one of the amendments. A second amendment is an amendment to building codes, which is a resolution adopting additional building codes, standards, appendices, and fee schedules by the Building Codes Department. And actually, that's, there's a third one that has to do with, that also has to do with building codes that is addressing a request by the state of Tennessee for us to revert back to a 2018 code on energy efficiency, whereas we had adopted a 2021 code, and they would like for us to be no further ahead in the codes adoption on that particular issue than the state is. So at their request, we have put that amendment in the ordinance as well. All of those have been available either in our office or in the Building Codes Office, and have been available for requests, I mean, for review. Anyone wishing to speak on any of them is requested to come forward at this time.
Same rule applies. And for my Commissioners, that's 24-a-8-2, 3, and 4 are the three resolutions there that we'll be voting on as well when we get through with this. 2, 3, and 4. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Warren Jenkins, 2025 Holloway Road, Lebanon, Tennessee. And on this home occupation stuff, I think biggest problem you've got is it's not being enforced. Okay? It's not being enforced. That's the worst problem. But you got people out here building pole barns, airplane hangars, 20-foot-off property lines. That needs to be addressed. The bigger the building, the further the setback ought to be. But you're allowing too many businesses to come into these homes. And I'm talking about commercial businesses. I ain't talking about a real estate person or somebody selling Avon. I mean, I've talked to you, Mr. Mayor. You know what I'm talking about. I'm not bringing my stuff into it. You really need to get it under control. It's killing the people of Wilson County that's paying the taxes. Not like these folks on Murfreesboro Road. They're out there on the main drag. It's going to go industrial. I'm, but where I live, I don't even think they'll ever even widen the road. You know, it's, it's country. But like I say, I think your biggest problem is it's not being enforced. I watched some of your Commission meetings on the, on the TV. You worried about parking. If a man owns his own truck, I've trucked for 45 years. I had to retire. If he owns his own truck and pays his payments on it, he ought to be able to park his truck, not the trailer, at his house. I mean, if he's got enough property, he can park his trailer at his house. But you got people with a quarter acre, half acre, one acre, and they're, they think they got a farm, you know? And, but hey, wish y'all would get it under control. It's out of control. And I, it's, it's enforcement. You enforcement. It's like I, when your people come out to look at the place next to me, they call and make an appointment to come. I can look out the front door, and it's just one truck after the other going down the road, down to the neighbor's house till your people come in, leave, then they come back. But my problem is society, but it needs to be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jenkins. Anyone else on these three resolutions? CNN, we'll close public comment period, and we'll go back into session if I get a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tom?
Okay, the first item that I have is the rezoning request by Free Hill Ventures. That does come to you with a positive recommendation from the Planning Commission. And they have made a list of commitments. Like you should have the master plan on each desk as revised. And we actually even found a couple of oversights this morning by the developer that they have agreed to correct. And you have a summary of that that's an email to me. It's got Tom Breshear up the top-left corner that states that those requirements would be, or commitments would be made a matter of the master plan and a matter, therefore, a matter of zoning. I'm going to go through a few of those highlighted. You heard some of them mentioned, but one of them was no blasting will take place on the proposed industrial properties east of McQuarrie Road. The other one, they inadvertently, on the master plan, had a clause that, that was referenced to the actual conceptual you see about aligning Couchville Pike and McQuarrie Road on a curve, on a curved alignment to try to preclude errant traffic from getting on parts of Vesta and McQuarrie Road that we don't necessarily want to see truck traffic on per our land use plan and per neighbor concerns. However, in hearing from the neighbors, I think the county commissioner has, has talked with the developer, or one of the county commissioners has at least, and they have agreed to change that to the intersection at Couchville Pike and McQuarrie Road will be redesigned to keep eastbound and northbound commercial traffic on the industrial corridor while minimizing impacts to the surrounding residents. And then they state the final layout and design will be approved by the county road commission and county engineer. What that does is, keep in mind, this is a rezoning. If you choose to approve it, it will have to go through site plan development, site plan approval. And that gives the developer and the Commissioners time to meet with the road commission, road commission staff, maybe some of the residents, and come up with something that may be more satisfactory to everybody, or maybe not. You know, it just depends on what the road commission's requirements are for a public county road. But it could include consideration for things like a three-point turn or a three, a three-intersection turn or a roundabout. So that was left a little bit more open-ended to allow for that to happen during site plan development. Want to talk a little bit about, I'm, you can read through the rest of them, but I'm just going to hit the highlighted ones. Bridge replacement is to be completed, and this is talking about the McQuarrie Road Bridge further south, is to be completed prior to the issuance of the final building certificate of occupancy for all the development on the property or within four years of the issuance of the first building certificate of occupancy, whichever is sooner. So that's sort of tying a timeline to it. And I'm assuming that the road commission may require some sort of surety for that going forward at the time that we get site plans to ensure that that does happen and that the developer doesn't do all his development and then leave town without getting that done. So there's also, if you, on the second page, this is very important because it is a 23-square-mile roughly watershed that comes effectively to the intersection that we all know and love at Couchville and McQuarrie and Vesta that in the right rain event can get, you know, six to eight feet high, bottom of the top, stop sign. I've seen it that deep at least. And what they've said is that the drainage improvements will be designed to meet a no-rise condition at completion. I will mention one other thing. I've been in conversation with Commissioner Hobbs and Commissioner Evans, whose district this is in. I've also been in a lot of conversation with the developer as well as our engineer, who I believe is here, Mr. Tuggle. And one question that's come up a little later in the, in the discussion is what does this do to Gladeville Utility District's risk of flooding on the south side of the Gladeville Utility District property going east of McQuarrie Road? There's this property, and then you go across the creek, and you've got Gladeville Utility District. Effectively, from, from my logic, if they're raising that bridge and they're widening the opening from the, what you have is the existing bridge on McQuarrie that's low, then they should be allowing for better passage of water off of the creek on down to Percy Priest. You heard the developer a minute ago on the record state that they were also going to be talking to the Corps about making some downstream adjustments if the Corps will allow them to allow that water to get further down there. I want to be clear. For water going downstream, I think what, what I'm saying holds true. If it is a backwater flood where Percy Priest Lake may back up, similar to what we had maybe in the May 2010 flood would come to mind, there's not anything that really anybody's going to do to keep water from inundating there, and it may very well back up. My supposition would be it would have backed up with the current bridge you've got now, or it would back up if you've got the, the larger bridge that they're proposing. So all that being said, I submit it to you for your recommendation or for your approval or denial.
I have two Commissioners in that area, so I'll yield to Commissioner Hobbs and Commissioner Evans for any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been a long road. I think Commissioner Hobbs would agree. I think most concerns currently seem focused on the intersection design or redesign. The road commission has expressed willingness to take the residents' concerns into consideration. And the road commission and the developer both are good with coming up with a design that will work for the residents out there on McQuarrie and Vesta. To address another concern as far as dealing with Glade Utility, that was one of the wins, I thought, was having no blasting on, on the east side of McQuarrie. I agree that that's probably the same rock that's, that's on the west side, that's on the east side. With conversations with the manager of Glade Utility, he didn't seem as concerned about the west side, thinking that that was probably the downstream side of the Glade's water source. Now, are the... Do we need more warehouses out there? We already got 50. But have any of them offered any potential benefit to the community? Not like this. So six months ago, and everyone would have thought I'd say this, but I'd make a motion that we approve this, subject to all conditions of approval listed with this request, subject to the continued conversations between the developer and the other property owners out there to give the water somewhere to go, and subject to the developer working with Mr. Davis to take care of Fred the horse and to minimize any disruptions during construction and take care of any commitments that they made.
Got a motion by Commissioner Evans. Do you have a second?
Second.
Got a second, Commissioner Hobbs. Commissioner Hobbs, you have comments?
I do have a comment. Like Commissioner Evans has said, this project's been going on for months. We've both done it. I feel like we've both done our due diligence on it with the road commissioner and everybody else. We had to put a lot of things in mind. I know some of the citizens weren't happy about it. But we've seen this area flood for 30 years. And if y'all remember right, last year, some of the people that were here was the same ones saying that we couldn't get emergency access to them when we had the big flood. And that was true. They were landlocked. They were trapped in. Brother Speaker came up here and talked about his daughter not being, she was pregnant, couldn't get her out to the hospital. This is the intersection he was talking about. They had nowhere to go. We can't get, get to them. They can't get to us. We could have a school bus tipped over with a bunch of kids in there, and here we are stuck, especially during high-water events, and we can't get to them. We really don't have a choice in this matter, especially with everything going on. It's going to benefit this whole intersection of the community out there. Then we'll go ahead and let this go through. So yes, we are for it.
Commissioner Kurtz?
I have a question for Tom. Kind of a, because two of these, the first two anyway, involve land use plan amendments. What, what's our rubric for giving a land reuse plan amendment or not giving a land? Because we're getting ready to have a highly controversial Because we're getting ready to have a highly controversial come to us in December. They're gonna ask for an amendment.
Well, according to the state of Tennessee law that was passed, if you are to do something that is in variance to the land use plan, you should amend the land use plan, at least in conjunction with any rezoning that would've otherwise conflicted with the land use plan. So, so that's your, that's your rubric. I mean, I don't know.
How do we make a decision?
Yeah.
When, when to amend, amend one, and when?
Yeah, that's, well, I don't think we can, yeah. And just so you're aware, staff did recommend denial of, of this rezoning request based on the land use plan. However, I think it's certainly within your rights as a county commissioner to consider the concessions or commitments that the developer is making, and which I would be remiss if I didn't say in this case, are pretty significant with regard to some of the public road right-of-way improvements. And I, I don't think we can write an ordinance or a regulation that accounts for every occurrence or every potential occurrence. And in this case, you just kind of have to take a look at it and evaluate it based on the merits of the request and the merits of what they're proposing to, to do.
So what I'm hearing you say is, we really just flip a coin? I mean, this isn't directed at you at all, but?
No, sir.
We don't have a rulebook on the land use plan that says?
No, sir.
The neighboring homes are affected, or if everything's industrial around the neighboring homes, then go ahead and do it.
No, sir, we don't have a rubric like that at present. I think that, I mean, other than trying to follow the original land use plan, if you wanted to be hard-nosed about it, the, the current land use plan update that we're in the middle of, you can certainly discuss adding some sort of rubric like that if you wish, as a standard.
Any other questions or comments before we vote? Got a motion to approve and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record reflect as unanimous. Tom?
The, the next item on the agenda is a rezoning of...
Still gotta vote on the rezoning on that one, don't you?
I'm sorry.
Don't you still have to vote on the rezoning on that one? That was the approval.
Yeah.
Do them both?
Same time, yes, sir.
Okay. So, yes. So the rezoning of the, the next one is the rezoning of the property made by Jessica Clark and Diane Jurnell. They're applied for by them, who have, who have applied jointly requesting rezoning their property from A1 Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial. Properties are located at 3571 Murphysboro Road and 3625 Murphysboro Road, and contain approximately 13.96 acres combined. Their further reference is County Property Map 114, Parshall 35 and 35.20.
Commissioner Evans, this is in your district?
It is. Question first, Mr. Chairman, did we need to have two votes on the previous item? One for the land use amendment, one for the rezoning?
Mike, you want to address that?
That's what I just asked, and I was told that the motion was, and you made the motion, you tell us, was to combine both of them, the land use plan and the rezoning.
If you want to, that's fine with me.
Well, that's the way it went down.
Okay, that's fine.
And, and we actually met about this in our office, I think we met with?
We did.
We did, and we talked about, it gets confusing to you guys when you vote on the land use plan, Tom said, and then we turn around and vote on the rezoning. So one of, so if you vote for one, then you're voting for the other, and so that's why we combine them together. If you change the rezoning, then it changes the land use plan. Land use plan is a map that we go by, and the rezoning though comes back to you always for a vote. So that's why we put those together, that's why I read both of them together. As this one here that you're fixing to talk about, rezoning is going from A1 to C3 Highway Commercial, and land use going from rural residential to commercial. You could vote for one and say yes, and vote for the rezoning and say no, but they both gonna go together when you do that. So that's why we put them together. If you, and that's what we met about and talked.
We did, and I'll take that a step further. I think the way we concluded was if anybody still wanted to separate them?
We can.
You have that right.
Separate them and vote on them.
But the, but the way we're presenting tonight was an effort to try to cut down on confusion because it's, it had been my perception, when I left here with recent rezonings, in light of the state law that requires us to have land use plan amendments with rezonings that don't necessarily coincide with the current land use plan, that it was confusing y'all, and, and by the end of it, me too. So, so we're trying to, we had the meeting to try to streamline this process a little bit.
Going back to Commissioner Evans to speak on this particular case, and both of them if you want to, or just one?
It's fine to combine them, Mr. Chairman. It never really made sense to me to have to, to do it twice, but it's just the way it was.
But you do have the ability to split them if you wish.
Gotcha. Thank you. Mr. Tom, how far out are we on our land use plan?
It will, the, the projected schedule by my consultant is spring to summer of '25, so probably June, July timeframe is my best guess.
How long have we been working on this?
Since 2022 at least, but the growth plan?
Understand.
The, the growth plan came in in the middle of that and took approximately a year and a half to two years of that time.
Understand.
So, we really didn't get back on the horse in earnest until a couple of months ago, about three months ago.
Only reason I ask, this is another really good example of why we need our updated land use plan. This is a straight rezoning request, so we don't have any idea what might want to go in out there. And we have no way to add any kind of protections for the community behind, behind these folks. Now, these properties would be great for some small businesses, and these properties aren't great for warehouses because it's some really rocky soil out there. I understand that. But at the same time, this request is a direct result of previous rezonings by this body that has allowed in more commercial. Some of them didn't make much sense. So we gotta ask ourselves, do two wrongs make a right? I've had a hard time with this, and I have a really hard time trying to support just a straight rezoning. But if this is something that the county is partially responsible for, we kind of have some kind of duty to, to try to fix it if we can. That being said, I did go back and re, and watch the Planning Commission meeting, and I believe that there were some commitments made by the property owners to the LaFever's, to the property owner across East Ole Murphysboro Road, is that correct?
I can't hear anything you're saying, that's why I was...
Okay. I believe at the Planning Commission meeting, then you made some commitments to Mr. LaFever's as far as working with him to leave some trees, a tree buffer?
Yes.
Yes.
That's what she...
And potentially work with them as far as access to East Ole Murphysboro Road. There was some, there was discussion about that, but...
He, I said in the Planning Commission meeting that we never agreed to have no access to Ole Murphysboro Road, but that there will be, I, I agreed with the buffer.
Okay.
And that, and what that is, is a verbal commitment from the applicant. Certainly they're on record and under oath saying that. Because it's not a master plan, we don't, we don't have a zoning requirement we can apply to it. So if they, if they sold to somebody and they chose not to do that, I don't really have any way to go in as an enforcement mechanism like I would on a master plan.
So here we are. Since this is something that this body did cause, then I will make the motion that we approve this request.
I got a motion, I have a second. Now discussion, Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, I just had a process question for Tom. Did the state change the law on the land use plan fourteen years from now?
Yes, yes. In 2006, when we adopted the last land use plan, it, there was no requirement that the legislative body adopted. Now there, now there is. So what we did in 2006 is had the Planning Commission adopt it, and that gave you as a county commissioner ultimate flexibility to consider the land use plan, but you didn't necessarily have to follow it. You've, you've either got to follow it or amend it.
Commissioner Breeze?
Good.
You're good? Okay. Any other questions or comments before we vote on this property?
Can you tell us what the motion was?
Motion is to approve the rezoning. Any other questions or comments? Are you ready to vote? All in favor, say aye. Are there any opposed? The record reflect as unanimous. Mr. Tom?
Yes, sir. The final rezoning is an application that's been made by Brian Keith at KNA Land Surveying, representing property owner Sue Harris, requesting the rezoning of property from A1 Agricultural to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. The properties are located at 4695 Carthage Highway and 4721 Carthage Highway, and contain approximately 4.16 acres combined. The properties are further references, Wilson County Property Map 61, Parshall 2 and 2.01. This again comes to you with a recommendation from the Wilson County Planning Commission for approval. And this is the Cooksey's Market and the adjoining property under the same ownership, where I believe there's a house in existence now. I don't know if it's gonna continue to be there, but...
Right behind it, yeah.
Right. And so it has been largely commercially used for a number of years.
Right.
Then Commissioner Dowes's district?
Yes, and what you just said, it's been like that for years, and I don't, I know Sue, and I didn't receive any calls, so I make a motion that we approve.
Second. Got a motion, a second. Now any discussion? Seeing and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Staying.
We have one abstaining by Commissioner Kurtz. Mr. Tom, that will move forward with the 24-8-2.
The next item is the Amendment to Wilson County Zoning Ordinance. It's a resolution amending the definition and related criterion for determining the existence of an allowable home, home occupation as opposed to other uses within the Wilson County zoning resolution. You heard during public comment that there was some criticism, laws, that we need to enforce what we have. We are trying to enforce what we have, and we're running continually into difficulties doing so with, with people calling out legal reasons they should be allowed to be considered a home occupation as opposed to commercial use. What this initially was intended to do was to try to clarify for our inspectors, if you were our zoning inspectors, when they go out on a property, and give them some more clear-cut thresholds that what you've got here can fall under home occupation, or what you've got here cannot fall under home occupation. You're running a contractor's storage yard, or you're running some other type of commercial business that is more appropriately located in a commercial district. Do I think that what we have in the end is going to solve all the world's problems in regard to this problem, in this issue? No. But it was a stab at it. Yes, sir.
Hang on one second.
Okay.
Yeah, I hear a motion on...
Motion to approve.
I got a motion, I hear a second. I got a motion, a second. Go to Commissioner Marlowe.
Which one are we on?
24-8-3.
Okay, Sue. Which resolution are you talking about?
24-8-3.
Okay, in the, in that resolution, in the one, two, three, fourth, whereas, it, the end of that sentence, it says, "may not adequately fit harmoniously into residential zones." And one of the things that, that is being talked about behind me is things are not being taken care of properly that are already on the books, enforcement. And then, and we're having a hard time enforcing, well, we had a hard time enforcing a grass rule or a few other things, so we just decided to do away with them.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we've got people that are living in neighborhoods that's calling me quite often now, and I have to tell them, I'm sorry we can't do anything about that because we don't have a rule about that anymore. Quite frankly, I think that's ridiculous. We're having, we, people are having to live in neighborhoods with homes where grass is three and four feet high, where trailers are falling in half, and we don't do anything about it. But we're worried about parking a car or a truck in the front yard. So, yet if we're gonna enforce, if we're gonna do something to make our neighborhoods better and nicer and, and more harmoniously adequate, let's do it all. My opinion ought to be yours.
Mr. Dow?
Well, and, and I was gonna say the same thing because out in my neighborhood, you know, there's, there's probably seven or eight that I've called you about, and, you know, they say, well, we've sent them letters, or we did this. Well, it's going on two years, and we'll, how, when are we gonna quit sending these letters and start doing something, you know? And I mean, not you, I'm just saying.
I'll tell you that zoning enforcement in the county, from the time I got here in 2001, which I had very little to do with, all the way up to 2018 when I did take it over, and then beyond, is a difficult animal because you're in the county, not in a city. Cities do have a better hand played whereby they have City Environmental Court that they can do right after their traffic court, and, and, and seek, seek swifter justice, if you will.
Okay.
Our, our court system requirement is that it goes through our circuit court, our Chancery Court, and that takes time to get on the docket, and it takes several years to get, to get justice, if you will.
Right, but okay, but as big as we are, and this might be for Mike or whatever, but as big as we are, can we not, I guess, get on the docket or start fining these people because they're laughing at us? Every time you call, and the neighbors out there, they're calling me saying that ain't nothing been done. They call the mayor, and then I call you, then I call Karen, then I call Chris.
And our procedure is, is unlike previous procedures, we would send 17 or 18 letters. Now, we send a letter with 30 days to address it. If they don't address it, we send a second letter with 30 days to address it. If they don't address it, we send them a notice of intent to pursue court action, and we turn it over for court action. Because there's no point in continually sending out letters with no response from the people. Now, many people do respond to those letters and say, what's the problem? And they try to fix it.
So there are no court?
Some people do, do respond, like, for instance, like on the home occupation ordinance that you're considering, and argue with us.
Right.
It is a home occupation versus not.
Okay, so is there not a court that we can get in? That might be for Mike. Is there not a, that we can't get in quicker? Because I, I've got stuff that's two years, that is literally two years.
Well, let me, let's talk about this.
Okay.
You file a complaint in Circuit or Chancery Court. Once they're served, they've automatically got 30 days to file an answer. If they come in and contest that, then you gotta set it for trial. If they don't contest it, if they don't answer, we do a motion for default judgment and generally get what we want. Now, I've got two this morning that I sent out notices, some of the people here know the notices I sent out of judgments we got a year or 18 months ago, and now that we've gotten the judgment and everything kind of slacked off because you gotta move on to something else, they go back to doing what they were supposed to not been doing. So now I've got to go back and deal with that, and I will. But, you know, part of the problem you're talking about is in my office. I'm all on up to that. But the other thing is, is it's not as easy as, as Tom has mentioned, how the cities do it. They have an environmental officer, and they cite them basically, and it's, it's almost a criminal citation that they take in and goes in front of the city judge. So we don't have that authority in the county to do that. And I don't think the sheriff wants it, just to be honest with you, I wouldn't. But we have to do it the way we have to do it to enforce these zoning laws. Now, there's a whole lot of wiggle room in every zoning law we have, and frankly, I feel sorry for Tom and them when they go out because no two cases are exactly alike. And, you know, you talk about, and we get into court, we've got this case pending now against the church in Mount Juliet, and we've just won one on a rock quarry in, in, out in your district.
Right.
But it takes some time, Chris, and when people fight that, then it takes some time. We've been successful.
Right, well...
It takes some time.
How do we get the authority that the cities have?
Yeah, that's, that's, that was my question.
I guess through the state legislature, dude.
That, I've already described what I'm, because I did work at a city, and what most cities that I'm aware of do. Lebanon may have even taken it a step further, I'm not exactly sure about this, but they put it under their police, they put codes and zoning enforcement under their police department. I don't know if that means they can write a ticket just like they would for parking in front of a fire hydrant immediately?
Yes.
Or, but, but if, if that's what it means, that's something we do not have and would not have unless we were to put it under the sheriff's office. And again, the sheriff is a different animal than a local police department.
I can answer that question. They do have authority because they wrote me a ticket on my side. So I've lived that with the city of Le... They've got authority that we don't have.
So if, if I'm hearing you right, if Robert had the officers to do that, to go out with codes to write these tickets, then they would be in these other courts, right?
No, I, no, I want to be clear, Sheriff Bryan has been, has been very good for us to work with. When we have a problem, that we go out and we need help, or we, we feel like we need some, somebody to help back us up, we can call them and they'll be out there with us, backing, backing us up on a zoning enforcement call. But in terms of us being able to follow the same procedures that the city does, that would have to fall under the county's police power, and I just don't see that as being viable.
We don't, we don't have that now, Mr. Dow. What we have is civil. What we have is civil enforcement. And we do get judgments because our zoning ordinance allows the court to assess a $50 per day fine. Now, that sounds pretty good, but if you've got a business out here making $1,000 a day, they'll pay that $50, keep going. So you just have to stay on them until you finally get it done. And we have gone as far, we did one three or four years ago, I know it's been since you've been there, that we actually had to sell the property. We had to get an order to sell the property.
And I do want to stand up for my inspectors and my zoning enforcement division. They, they are doing the level best they can to run an efficient shop, and part of that was coming to not sending out 10 or 11 zoning violations. Sending two or three, and if you're not getting a response, there's no point in continuing that process. They should be turned over for court action. After that, it takes some time.
Commissioner Hall?
My only way of addressing this, to me, this feels like we're trying to establish a countywide HOA. Just reading through this, just wrestling with me. But one of the things that, and I've got a few issues with this, and I'm looking at it right now. One of them is Park C under the characteristics. It says, "No more than one piece of heavy equipment that can be carried by a trailer." So I guess my question is, if I've got a stitch one out in my zone that does work with bobcats, and he's got more than one bobcat, has he got to get rid of them?
They shouldn't be stored at that property, particularly outdoors, because it would be a contractor's storage yard, which is an allowable use in an industrial district.
Next one, it's talking about, well, I'll tell you, I've got, I'll just go down through it as I see. The one talking about farm use says that none of this applies to, through Tennessee statute or definition, or is it...
That is true.
As long as that equipment is only used in pursuit of these farming and agricultural activities, but it says that that equipment has to be on site of that property. So if they have a tractor that they store at their house, are they not allowed to use it on another farm?
They can use it on another farm, but the, it has to be used for agricultural purposes.
Right, but this is definitely...
And again, think about how hard this is to enforce, too. If you've got somebody that's, that's an excavation contractor that has a beef cattle farm as well, you know?
Now, I mean, it just says here that it has to be on site at their residential property, so that appears to me to say you can't take that equipment off of their residential property to another farm with them, is what that sounds like. It's the way it's ordered. Says so long as it is only used in the pursuit of these farming activities.
So long as it's only used in the pursuit of those farming and agricultural activities. Certainly, we have farmers that cut hay on several farms, and we're not going to stop them from doing so.
This is worded to say it has to be on their residential property. It can only be on their residential property.
It says at any residential property for the purpose of farming and agriculture. So, I mean, we would allow them...
So they can, they can travel with it?
They can.
Okay. All right, I'll keep going, I'm sorry, I've got so...
That's, that's okay. As I said, this is not a perfect ordinance, but it's a stab.
Barbering salons, there was a lot, but I know there's several people that have a license to do that, and they do it out of their home, and they're very fine haircutters and beauticians. And it says, "No more than three client seats on site." As, I'm assuming, I'll just give you some clarification, that's to keep from having an actual workforce of barbers and clients in somebody's house, that...
Yes, and having...
Multiple barbers.
A litany of people parked there that no longer can, can hide the fact that they're running commercial operations.
People from sitting and waiting to be having their hair cut.
No.
Okay. And on firearm one, I was really confused on that.
Well, the firearm one, and I'm going to have to lean on Mike for this one. The firearm, when we have generally, in the past four or five years, considered firearm sales as a home occupation, so long as they establish storefront hours, which there is a storefront requirement with the ATF, they have to have a storefront. Well, in a residential area, that's almost exact opposite of what we're looking for. We don't want a commercial storefront. We don't want guns R Us with bars on the window for sale at the, at the front there of a residential neighborhood. But what that storefront actually entails, per the ATF, is a place that has to be open and available with business hours for inspection of their records. And there's an obvious reason for home security and everything else, the ATF may need to inspect those records. So what we've tried to do is say, "It's a home occupation as long as continues to look, smell, and act like a residence, takes up no more than 25% of the ground floor area as, as it currently does, as the current regulation state of the buildings, and so long as you have business hours," and they generally need to establish business hours that are during school hours, so as to try to limit the number of children that may be out and about playing in the neighborhood. Most of the people that are exercising FFL licenses, and that's why this comes up, they're coming in and they have to get some sort of zoning letter from the local government to apply for their FFL license with the ATF. And prior, we were doing Board of Zoning Appeals cases as a use permissible on appeal for each and every gun sales request that came up, and as a result of that, we would have hour and a half long public hearings of people from a neighborhood coming up, when really, Mike went and talked to the ATF at one point and said, "If we deny one of these, what are y'all gonna do?" And the ATF said, "Well, we're probably gonna approve it." So, Mike, do you want to weigh in on that?
No, you, that's surprising, you know, they, they tell the folks, "You gotta get zoning approval." And I asked them, said, "Well, what are the options if we don't approve it?", and they said, "We'll probably approve it anyway." So that's where we cut out the public hearings, when there's nothing you can do about it.
So, so I listed that to clearly stipulate that we're going to allow that as a considered home occupation, as long as it fits the other criterion outline.
The 9 to 3, is that a federal...
No, no, that's our requirement that we did have when it went before Board of Zoning Appeals, and we just memorialized it in this ordinance.
Are you good? Do you have more?
Oh, yeah, I've still got more, I'm so sorry. I should have asked beforehand. Anyways, where it talks about no more than three clients on site...
Are you talking about for the barber? For the barbershop?
On the firearm sales.
Yes, again, that was, that was harkening back to when we did do Board of Zoning Appeals cases for each and every one of them. The general sentiment of our Board of Zoning Appeals was, we did not want a retail presence, really for any type of sales, but in particularly in response to gun sales, particularly given the fact that the only reason these people are showing up asking for it is because the ATF requires it. So what they're saying is, this needs to, like other, every other home occupation, it needs to look, smell, act, and feel like a residence most of the time. And it was above three, three clients at any given time, which again, most of these FFL licenses, they're not selling on site anyways. I can think of one out-and-out gun sales that, that has occurred historically in this county for, with an on-site store, if you will. And then I can think of a couple that are gunsmithers, they, they smith and repair guns, that somebody may perchance show up, hand them a shotgun to bore out or something else. But for the most part, these are people that are participating in gun shows, online sales, so on and so forth.
Brand starters.
And the storefront is merely for record keeping.
I was just curious on the three clients, because I was sitting easily.
No, it's, it's not easily enforceable.
Five people showed up.
No, no, I mean, that's, it's, it's not an easy enforcement. No, sir.
And then on the, I'm assuming on the photography, art, pottery, photography deals, no more than two sessions on site at any given time, I'm assuming you're trying to...
That's again, trying to, trying to get them to limit how much traffic's on site at any given time.
All righty, I think that's all I've got, I appreciate it.
Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to make this quick. Tom, first of all, thank you for what you do, you and your staff, you do a good job. I know you're busy.
Thank you.
And, you know, we can hammer our way at this, and we can get it, we can work at it, and we can get it exactly how we want it to say, but, you know, I just want to circle back to my dear colleague, Commissioner Dowell, is the enforcement. You know, we can do, we can work on this and get it going, but I know Mike, he's busy, and he's doing everything he can, but it follows, you know, at the end of the day, how are we gonna enforce this? You know, I think about the calls that we received, all of us received, about the church and the, and the sound, you know, the ordinance situation, and at the end of the day, we're telling them, you know, we can't do anything because we don't have a...
An noise ordinance. We do not have a noise ordinance.
Yeah, so I think for this body, should we kind of circle back and look at, you know, do we need to come together and make some type, or invent some type of department to handle these, to enforce? Kind of like the city does. Do we need to sit down with, you know, Jason Lawson, our DA, and maybe our county attorney, and say, "Hey, look, how can we issue these citations?", or can, you know, what can we do as a county to be able to take that and run with that?
Guys, I, I don't know how to make it much plainer. We don't have the authority for Jason Lawson, who is a criminal prosecutor, or any of our people to go out and do this. Right now, our enforcement is through civil process. Now, there's a, there's a misconception out there, and not among any of y'all, but I have, I have dealt with some people that say, "Well, you just go in and get us an injunction." Well, you're just gonna walk in and ask the judge for an injunction. You've got to file a sworn complaint that's got all the facts set out in it, and why you need to get that injunction. And the judge may give it to you for 15 days, but he may very well say, "I'm gonna set a hearing on this, and you bring your people in here and testify." Okay, that's fair, but the people we're pulling in out of his office to testify can't be out going after anybody else. So we try to be selective with what we do. You're not gonna catch everybody, although I wish we could, but, you know, we've got what? 140,000 people in this county? And Commissioner Hall, I'll get off my soapbox in a minute, but Commissioner Hall hit a, hit a good point there. Some of these things in here need to be done in an area like Mount Juliet or Lebanon, outside the city limits, where people are on half-acre lots or acre lots. But when you get up into his district, into Terry Scruggs' district, people got 100-acre farms or more, and to tell them they can't have but one bobcat's kind of difficult. But we're trying to pass a law that applies to everybody from one end of the county to the other, and it's difficult, you won't ever, you know, my suggestion is, if you're going to start, start with this, and then start fine-tuning it as you get that. And I don't mean to be so negative about things, I think most of you know I'm a pretty optimistic fellow, but I can't tell you we can get Jason Lawson on this when there's no statutory authority to do it. Now, if the legislature will give us that, I would welcome that. I would welcome somebody else having that responsibility.
Commissioner McFarland?
I would like to say that the Planning and Zoning Committee of the Commission met at least three times on this. We refined it and cleaned it up, and took a paragraph or two out of it, and I would really wish that the commissioners here, that the question would have come to the Planning and Zoning Committee and brought them up at that time, which I don't believe they did. But this is not perfect, it's not the best in the world, it's the best we could come up with, and, and in sight of the fact there's not anything else out there, I think that we need to pass it. Is it gonna need to be modified in the future? Probably so, until we can move further ahead. And I, I think that we need to consider asking our legislature to do a private act, excuse me, a private act that gives us that authority, Commissioner Dowell, and have maybe some type of enforcement, whatever you want to call this title, in whatever department they can go out and cite these people and take them directly into court, just like a city does. But I think, I think we need to pursue that, because if we don't, we're gonna be just like Wendell said, we're gonna have junk trailers and whatever, and it's gonna go on forever. You're gonna need to stop it.
Commissioner Hall?
I was at at least one of those meetings, I did raise some concerns there in those meetings. I understand what you're saying. I just personally, this is just my opinion on this, I don't think this is against, I just don't think this particular resolution, doing all of this and trying to regulate and really try to stop somebody from making a living in the county is a good idea. I'll even go as far as to make a motion to table this indefinitely.
I'll second that. So I had a motion as second on the floor to get it to vote. Now I've got a motion as second to table it. Comments or questions? Mr. Bries?
So as you can see, I made the motion for, to support this, because I think it actually gives us a place to start. I know that this has been worked on for over six months. It's gone back and forth between the Planning Committee, to the Planning Commission, I think Bozey even heard it, and then it's come back around.
We held a workshop.
Right, yeah, there, I think there was a workshop with all three bodies as well, so, I mean, this has been a product of a lot of conversations. And again, it keeps, it gives us a place to start. And I understand the situation that you're in, the majority of your area is farming, but my area is not, and a lot of other people's areas are not as well. And we have people who are not happy. And it goes back to what Commissioner Dowell was saying, Commissioner Smith. And Mike, I'm gonna apologize in advance as I say this, because I haven't had an opportunity to discuss this with you directly, but I requested in February a list of court cases that have been turned over to Mike, and I have that list, and it goes back to 2019. Now, my understanding in codes and zoning violations is that the process is that if there's a problem, a letter is issued, and then after 30 days, a reinspection is done, and then if it's still a violation, then a second letter is issued, and then you have another 30 days, and then a third inspection is done, and if that doesn't clear it, then they have 15 days for the third letter, and then at that point, so it's a total of 75 days, right? Did I count the wrong number of letters?
Maybe 90, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
And then at that point, it's turned over to Mike for, you know, to take it to court for civil action of some kind. And again, I have cases sitting here from 2019, and I know there's been conversations over the years about having some kind of zoning and codes docket at some point, and I know that this county is big and you do a whole lot for us, so please don't take this as criticism as much as it's, I think the issue that we're all sitting here circling, that we have our inspectors go out and go through the whole process, and then we kind of hit a roadblock. And again, I don't know if it's anybody's specific fault, but if we could figure out a way to be able to address that, it would be very, very helpful. And on top of it, I think that, like I said, this with the home occupation, that again gives us a starting block, and if we can figure out the process to be able to take these things to court, I think that our citizens are gonna be a whole lot happier with us in general.
Questions called for on the motion table. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Nobody else is in the hopper, so we're good there. Got a motion to defer indefinitely is what you're gonna vote on. If you want to do that, vote yes. If you want to vote no, vote no. Are you ready to vote?
If you vote no, that means, or not vote, hey?
Yes, sir. If you vote yes, you're voting to table it indefinitely. If you vote no, you're voting to not, not table it, and then we'll turn back around and vote if that's what you do. Mr. Scruggs?
You got something in your way there?
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. The motion failed 14 to 9, so now we got it back on the floor for resolutions 24-8-3. Got a motion as second to approve. Any other questions before we vote? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Give me one second. Ready to vote, please vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 14 yes, and a resolution passes. Ready to move on now, Mr. Tom, to which one of the other two you...
14 yes and 10, resolution passes. Ready to move on now, Mr. Tom, to which one of the other two you want to do? Just let me know which one you're doing.
Let's start with 24-8-2.
Thank you. Positive, Kurtz.
The additional code, standards, appendices, and fee schedules.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Evans, Commissioner McFarland. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 20 and 2, resolution passes. Ready to move forward.
Next item on the agenda is 24-8-4. This has to do with the state of Tennessee asking us to revert from the 2024, or excuse me, 2021 Energy Conservation Code back to the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code.
Any discussion on that? See you none. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Chandler? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 0, resolution passes. Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your time, and I hope you enjoy the fair. One piece of trivia about the paintings that you got. I think courtesy of Mr. McFarland and his efforts for the 225th anniversary, Mr. Ponder usually puts a pigeon on every one of his paintings, so see if he can find it.
Thank you, sir. Reports of Minutes Committee, Commissioner Denton.
Yes, I think you have two sets of your present reports in your package. One thing required to actually become of our committee meeting was last month. It came right before our commission meeting, and so it was probably 4th of July, I believe, our committee meetings. So I think we went ahead and approved them, and they're spiraling. But they are printed in your pack for last month as well, as we met 30 August 8th in the conference room here. And we looked for their minutes from the last meeting, and there was no, there was one correction made. It was taken care of, and the correct minutes were submitted by your approval. Prove that they be submitted in files.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Reading of the minutes?
Motion to dispass with the reading of the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye. Elections and appointments, Mr. Goodall is not here. Any notaries to be added? Got a second set on your desk tonight. They hear a motion to approve the notaries.
Approve the notaries.
Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye. You are to appoint one member to serve now through May 2026 on the Health Education Facility Board. I'd like to recommend to you for your consideration, Mr. Kurt Baker. Information about Mr. Baker was in your packet. Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Judicial Commissioners, I'll turn this over to Mr. John Gentry.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, we got four under consideration. I'm going to ask for Stacy Swedell to come forward to give a good summary. It'd be three for reappointment and one for appointment.
Can you vote on them separately, Mike?
Yeah.
We will vote on these separately, and we'll do them one at a time. Ms. Stacy?
Okay, three months ago, Todd Gibson and Luis Martinez were appointed both part-time for three-month term. Luis Martinez would like to move into a full-time slot, so I'm asking that you move him into full-time in our office. Todd Gibson, he just needs to be reappointed. He's still part-time. They're both doing a great job. We want to keep them. When Luis Martinez moves into a full-time position, that will leave a part-time position open, and we're asking that you elect Jim Mars into that part-time position. Jim Mars worked with us from April the 5th of 2022 to July the 9th of 2023, full-time, and he would like to come back part-time.
Who would like to lead me to this? Mr. John?
I should now approve Mr. Martinez for two-year full-time.
Any discussion on Mr. Martinez? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect as unanimous. Next?
I make a motion that Todd Gibson be appointed part-time for one year.
Discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record reflect as unanimous.
I make a motion that Jim Mars be approved part-time for a two-year position. And all these were approved and recommended in the commission, or in the committee, for Jim Mars.
I got a motion in the Second now. Any other discussion? Comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Record reflects as unanimous.
The last one is Ms. Anita Fox. We approved her for a full-time, and she requested that she be relegated to the part-time. So I'm recommending, actually, it was recommended by the committee. And I make a motion, we approve her two-year part-time. And when that's approved, she'll be relegated to the part-time, and the full-time is be removed.
Second.
Motion in the Second. Discussion? Anybody? See you none. All ready, all you ready to vote? Say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. I messed that one up.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. All righty. Anything else, Mr. John?
That's it. Thank you.
Force Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Smith?
No report.
Thank you, sir. Emergency Management Director report Director Cooper, and he could not be with us tonight and didn't have anybody to send. If you have questions for him, he said to let him know, and he would, could answer those for you. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz.
All Sports Committee met on Tuesday, August 6th at 5:30 up here in the conference room. The minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Got a motion in the Second. Commissioner Hall, do you have a question on that?
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to make a motion to accept the Emergency Manager Director's report. Is that correct?
No, if we have one, yes.
There's one in the packet. I'll make that motion.
I'll go back to that one. Thank you. The, I got a motion in the Second on Law Enforcement Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we'll go back to Director's report. Got a motion to approve that one? Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sheriff's report, Sheriff Bryan.
I should have stayed home, shouldn't I? Your report's in your packet. Numbers are reflective of summertime. Several of them are up. Calls for service. Did circle the total book through the jail. We've been open. The newer part is open, and the numbers, I always said, you build them, they'll come, so they're, they're coming. It's a lot going on. Inmate work, work crews have been out this past month. They've pretty much been at the fair, at the James E. Ward Ag Center.
Thank you very much.
How's that? And they're working out there daily during the fair. We'll, we'll pick up, back up on the road soon as we get, get everything done out there. There is a lot going on at the fair, James E. Ward Ag Center. I just, I just left. A lot of your county personnel are out there working. WEMA, Sheriff's Office, and out there trying to keep the place safe. I want to ask each and every one of y'all to plea, I got a favor to ask of each and every one of y'all. Have y'all, y'all been hearing about these scams, people calling people on the phone, saying you owe money for this? I'm from the Sheriff's Office. Listen, we've tried to promote this and stop this. I know the police departments are trying to stop it. They're giving my name, they're giving other people's name that works for the Sheriff's Office, and they're dialing you from a number that says the Sheriff's Office is calling. I just ask that people out here listening on TV, understand that we will not call people on the phone. If we want you, we're going to come pick you up. Okay? But they're taking advantage of our senior citizens there. And you got to understand, the older generation, if somebody calls and says they owe money, they're going to pay it, okay? But how many of y'all got face, in this room right here, Facebook, Twitter, Tweeter, whatever you call it? And all the, all social media stuff? If you don't, if you do, please put something out there that the sheriff said, hang up on these people. Okay? Please. And if you're listening out there in TV land, you do the same. That concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff. Out in TV land. Report from the Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education Committee met August 8th in the conference room. Minutes are in your packet. Move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Director of Schools report, Mr. Jeff Luttrell. I will say Sarah Davenport did text me. She is watching in TV land, and she said, Commissioner Breeze, she was, she forgot to send you the message to address alike Commissioner Weathers and Commissioner Bowman, and I'll, she apologized for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You both look alike, is what she said.
We got the memo out.
That's what I said. Go ahead, Director Luttrell.
Thanks, sir. You do have my report in front of you. Here's some of the highlights. We did, first half school was August 2nd. Great start. We did have some traffic issues, as normal. Bringing on Wes Wilson, and Tyler was in a meeting with Chief Police and our team, and I think we've got that worked out. My report's flowing really good now, so I want to thank you publicly, and thank the chief for coming to meet with us and bringing some ideas and suggestions. But off to a good start. Everybody's wanting to know about teachers. We do have some openings. We're down to around 50 certified openings. Most of those special education, but we will be able to manage and move forward. You do have the agenda of August 5th, Williston County Board of Education meeting. One of the highlights there is we recognize and honor Mr. Larry Thomason with proclamation and a plaque for 18-plus years of service on the Williston County Board of Education. He chose not to seek office this year. Also, we recognize Carrie Pfeifer for her, for her four years of serving on the board. She'll be rolling off the board September 1st. Oncoming, we have two new board members, Greg Holman representing Zone 1, Donnie Self, Zone 5. And we also, Melissa Lynn, re-elected Zone 3, Jamie Pharaoh in Zone 7. We sworn those members in tonight, this afternoon. They'll be ready to take office, take their duties on September the 1st. We will be having, going to two board meetings per month. Instead of a work session, a board meeting, I include the calendar. Think that'll make us more efficient, just as it's picking up what we have to get done. We're going to try that and see how that goes this school year. Enrollment numbers, Day 5 was 20,646. I got some updated numbers for 8/15. We're up to 20,711 students. That, right about what we projected. We think we'll hit 21,000 here around Christmas. If I remember correctly, coming out of COVID, we'd fell below 19,000, I believe. So you can see that progression was taking place. Did include capital outline, lay plan. I understand that's just a plan, but just do, do want to highlight some things. I know there's something on the agenda later tonight. Included in your packet, and I don't know if it's in color, but if not, if you want to color when I get it, just a highlight of what's been done in the last three years. This, this body has funded $108 million in schools and land. Out of our budget, we have taken care of maintenance and land to the tune of 11 million, and we have budgeted 2.5 million in this year. And a lot of that's going toward maintenance on these older buildings. So you have that, and just wanted to highlight that for you. I want to thank you for what you've done as, as we continue to deal with increased population. When you, when you build these homes, they got kids, and we got to educate them. So, but, but do look at that. It lays out where we think we need to be. It's just an estimate. Of course, we move these a lot of times, depending upon the funding. They did approve a bid for a new Central Pike Elementary School. You have that, and it'll be coming up later tonight. There's some information included in your packet on that. We did include all the bids on that for you. Legardo Project is, is out of the ground nicely. If you've been by there, you're seeing that come, come along. We would love to have that in operation this time next year to give us some relief. With that, there will be some zoning proposals coming up this fall for our school board to consider as we try to maximize the efforts. I get asked the question a lot, what happens when we, when we're out of space? If you don't build schools, you put in portables. And I will tell you, when, when I have to do that, the maintenance money that I'm being able to use out of our budget will be eat up in putting in portables at each of these sites. So I just want to make that statement to give you that. Did include home football game schedule. A lot of good games coming up. We encourage you to attend those as much as possible. That is my report, but I will take any questions if you have.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Report from Public Buildings Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
Mr. Chairman, the Public Work, the Public Buildings Committee met Tuesday, August 13th, in the upstairs conference room. The minutes were on our desk. Move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ag Center Management, Commissioner Scruggs. Animal Control, Commissioner Breeze.
No report.
Audit, Commissioner Glover.
No report.
Broadband access, Commissioner Franklin. Got a motion in the Second. Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Development tourism, Commissioner Brown.
The committee met on August 8th here at the courthouse. The copy is in your, your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ethics, Commissioner Dow.
No report.
Finance, Commissioner Cosley.
No report.
Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our committee met Thursday, August 8th, 2024, in the upstairs conference room. Your minutes are in your packet. I move that they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Had one up there and it got gone. Anybody? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Insurance, Commissioner McFarland.
No report.
Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
The Judicial Committee met 23 July. The minutes are in your packet. I make a motion, they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Also, we met tonight, and the minutes will be in next.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and ad hoc, Commissioner Cosley.
No report.
Planning and zoning, Commissioner McFarland. Planning and zoning met on July 30th at 5:30 PM, where we discussed many topics, including the home occupation. And I move to be approved and filed. Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Rules, Commissioner Keith.
Urban Type Facility Board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Second.
Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Finance Director's report, Mr. Aaron Maynard.
Make this very quick if I can. I just have a very few things. Number one, you had two substitute resolutions on your, your desk for 24-8-6 and 24-8-16. The first one, the, the grant agreement was for 1,300. The original budget amendment with that, with 24-8-6, I think was for 4,000, so that makes that in line. The 1,300 is what it was supposed to be, so that's why that one's been substituted. The other one was for tourism not to exceed 1.3 million. That has to do with the Grand Prix race that's coming up. That is actually, we, we had the budget amendment in there for 1.2, so we changed that to 1.3 to match the resolution. Last thing from me, we did have the bond sale this past week. We borrowed 77 million and got a premium of 6,870,000 for a total of 84,425,000. So after paying underwriters discount, we borrowed, or we walked away with 84,203. We borrowed 77,555,000. Interest rate, 3.67%. So I'll have that report again in a few weeks when we have to present the CT form, about a month. So concludes my report, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay, approve. Second.
Any discussion? See you none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget Committee met June-
Budget Committee met July the 15th and August the 8th. Minutes are in your packet. I move they be received and filed.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah. To amend the budget and appropriation resolution by approving Wilson County Board of Education budget amendment 25-01.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good?
Please record.
23 and 2. Resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-6, to approve the attached animal friendly grant to reflect revenues received, not included in the original budget, and to make an additional appropriation into animal control.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
Now, that's the one where you need to substitute the new amendment, wasn't it, Aaron?
Yes, sir, that's one of them.
Somebody needs to move to substitute that for what you're about to vote.
Make a motion, we substitute the 13th.
Second. For the 4th.
Motion to second to amend. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're ready to vote. Any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Mr. Glover, Commissioner Denton. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution, 24-8-7, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from general fund to building codes.
Motion.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-8, approving a lease agreement for Circuit Court and to appropriation funds for reserve account archives and reserve account data fees to Circuit Court.
Motion. Second.
Discussion now. Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Wasn't there a different resolution for number nine also? 16.
16.
Yeah, I had a nine on my.
I got one too.
You are correct. I did pass one out.
Is it a new resolution?
It's the one that you, you're already giving out.
Oh, that was the one that originally said, it says Health Department and should say Drug Corps. Right.
This is Drug Corps. It's a nine.
Just a corrected resolution, so I don't have to substitute that, do I?
Yes. Yeah, you need to go with substitute that.
Yeah.
Your motion to substitute, resolution 24-8-9? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're ready. Marlowe?
Resolution 24-8-9, to approve the Tennessee Certified Recovery Court Program Grant and to make an additional appropriation into the Drug Court.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Evans? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-10, to approve the local health service grant and to make an additional appropriation into Health Department.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-11, to amend the resolution 11-3-3 with regard to the Human Resource Director and Department.
Motion.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution 24-8-12, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution and to make category and line item transfers between Human Resources and Finance.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Weathers?
Whoops.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-13, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from sanitation fund to 207 to landfill. Get it right in a minute.
Got a motion to hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oh, no, no, no. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-14, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from general fund to PEG channel.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Glover?
The system was.
Sir?
Yes. The system went down for a second.
All hearts and minds good with your vote? I think he said yes.
Yes. I'm trying to get the system back up.
Got it. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-15, to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an appropriation from general fund to property assessor.
Move. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Rich? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-16.
Make a motion to substitute?
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Marlowe?
Approving a grant from the State of Tennessee Department of Tourism and to make an appropriation into tourism in the amount not to exceed 1,300,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I will say this, I got an email or something from Jason Johnson yesterday, I believe. The actual amount is coming in under 1.3 million, but it's not much under 1,200,000 dollars. So that's a pretty good sized grant.
Good.
And, but you can leave your budget, it doesn't have to be affected at all, the way we were wording.
Any other discussion?
Is there a match on that? Do we have to match any of it?
It's a straight, it's a straight pass-through match? No, sir, none of us, none of us, no, no match.
This is for the road race out there, advertising Grand Prix.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion? Commissioner Evans?
I, Mike asked, actually, asked my question. I was gonna ask what the grant was actually gonna be used for.
It's actually, the money came from the State of Tennessee Tourism. They want to keep the Grand Prix at the Speedway. That's kind of like the Super Bowl or the Grand Prix, and so they wanted to give them the money, but the only way they give the money is run it through the county, and so it actually just comes through us and passes straight to them.
Or advertise it.
Or whatever they need it for. Yes, sir. Any other questions? You ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-17, to reflect revenues received but not included in the original budget and to amend the budget and appropriation resolution to make an appropriation into FEMA.
Move. Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-18, approving a lease agreement for the county clerk.
Move.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Dow? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 23 and 2, resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8-19, to approve the purchase of real properties located on East Lester Avenue adjacent to 505 North Cumberland Street.
Move. Second.
Discussion?
That behind the jail?
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 22, yes, one, no, two absent. Resolution passes?
Resolution 24-8.
Mr. Marlowe? I'd been requested to pull this one. If we could, they have a better, maybe, resolution that would come, and we'll discuss that in next month's budget. Is that correct, Mr. Jones? So we can pull that one, if somebody will make a motion to do so.
Sorry, pull that one from today's.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Has been pulled.
A resolution 24-8-21, resolution, Board of Commissioners requesting that the future possibility of any additional wheel tax first be considered by the Budget Committee and County Commission for Roads.
I move.
Discussion now? Commissioner Evans?
Did this one come through the Road Commission, or where did this? Is there any way that we can, if we can't attend Road Commission meetings, we can watch them?
You can attend them, for sure, and watch them. I'm sure it can happen. We can ask them to put some cameras out there.
He was there. I was, I was.
You saw it.
Anyway, I appreciate y'all having me out there, too.
Say the rerun.
But there's, there's no minutes anywhere that are, that are findable either, are there?
I think the minutes are. We don't get the minutes of the Road Commission?
No.
Next month.
The Road Commission's not there for some reason.
Okay.
Can you answer that question? It's two months old.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, this is actually kind of an old resolution. Way it failed, July 4th, post-COVID weeks, it couldn't be last meeting, so this is kind of an old issue.
I understand. Not taking issue with y'all, I was just, all that I saw, it came through the Road Commission, I was just, you know, there, about anything else you can find minutes for, or go back and watch the meeting, but Road Commission's kind of its own little unique creature out there. So we liked it.
Commissioner Gentry?
Yeah, the sentence where it lays it out, that any increased amount of the wheel tax first be considered for the land out, et cetera, et cetera, roads. First be considered? Wouldn't it be better to say must be used for that? I'm just asking the question.
So the resolution was just passed by the Road Commission, is that, that when we consider passing a wheel tax, if you consider to put that out for a vote, just give them consideration first for road use, for that, and consideration?
Consideration.
Sir?
I mean, if we did a wheel tax.
What would be the second? You know, like before, you had different thoughts about where you could raise that wheel, maybe to fund different things in county government, and they were just asking that, when you do consider that, to think about roads first before you do that? That was what they were asking.
It seems like it should be more definitive that it should be used for that.
Guess the commission could make that call, yes, sir. Okay. Mr. Kurtz?
I agree, the actual.
Should be independent.
Resolution doesn't state should be considered by the Budget Committee and County Commission. I don't, maybe I missed it, but it doesn't state that specifically, like what we're voting on.
It's in the heading.
In the heading up there.
Okay.
I missed it.
Mr. Dowey?
It's in the heading.
I guess the heading does.
Resolution? Mr. Kurtz was saying that the heading, that what's up here on the screen doesn't actually reveal what the.
Well, it does say it up in, it says what, in the heading, but in the body of it, I don't know if it makes a difference or not.
I always only put the headings on that.
Yeah, I don't think they're questioning the heading. They're questioning the difference between the heading and the body.
And the body, that's.
Yeah, and under the resolve portion, the last paragraph, it does say, should the County Commission take up the discussion of a possible increase in the wheel tax?
Right, that's where I have an issue, that it doesn't say budget in there, and so I don't.
You can amend that, put that in there if you'd like to. It's, it's just my mistake, I guess.
Commissioner, I'll wait on that, if you come up with it. Commissioner McFarland?
Does this not, Mike, does this not just establish a procedure? It doesn't do anything other than just saying, this is the way we'll do it if we're gonna do it in the future? Is that not correct?
It is. See, if y'all take up the discussion of a wheel tax, again, you'll talk about going to roads first, but you're not committed to that. You can go with something.
This is just a procedural commitment.
Recommendation. Commissioner Evans? You're good? Any other questions or comments or discussion? Commissioner Kurtz, are you good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. We're ready to vote?
No.
No, Commissioner Marlowe, my bad.
I would, since Kurtz didn't do it, I'd like to make a motion that, in that paragraph, last paragraph, that budget be put in there, like it states.
Second.
Got a motion to amend, to go to, to have budget added to that. I got a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Denton?
Yes, I guess I'm a little confused. Why would we need a resolution at all on this, if you, last time wheel tax was brought up, the commissioners didn't do that. Came in through Budget Committee, or through some, I don't know, who the Budget Committee got it. So why would, why would it just not be a simple request at the time, something being considered? Why would we need a resolution, man? We don't do it on other things.
Point taken. Got a motion on the amendment right now. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we're ready to vote on the wheel tax resolution to consider as a procedure. If you consider raising the wheel tax, that you would consider the Road Commission needs as first. Let's vote on it, on the record, because I know.
Yes.
If you're ready to vote, please cast your vote. Voting for consideration if you raise a wheel tax to send it to roads. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
Sixteen yes, six no, one abstained, and two absent.
Got you. Resolution passes? Commissioner Marlowe?
Resolution 24-8-22 authorizing the issuance of, um, county district school bonds in the principal amount not to exceed 53 million.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion? Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Dow? All hearts and minds good with your vote? Commissioner Breeze?
I think I jumped again. I've got very quick new business, but we're not there.
Got you. Uh, please record. 23 and 2. Resolution passes. Old business, anybody? Ready for new business?
Yeah.
Is this old business?
New.
New business? Commissioner Breeze?
Real quick, because I know everybody wants to get home. Um, I've had a couple of citizens actually come to me, um, about the ARP money for water utilities. I know you guys have all heard about this too. So, I wanted to request from the mayor, if you could have all the water utilities that we gave money to, to come up here and just give us a brief report. We gave them money two years ago. So, even if they are just at the point of engineering, that way, we just have a public update as to kind of where we are in the project. So, I don't know if I need to make a motion to make that request or not, but I'm just requesting to you, if you could request the water utilities to come, just give us a quick update. I will make a motion to please request.
Uh, any discussion further? Commissioner Rich?
Uh, yes, mine is actually over the meeting that we had in budget on the 8th in regards to the 3% to employee bonuses. Uh, after we left, had some concerns, and I actually met with, uh, Mayor Hutto in regards to the information. Uh, I think that we've got our full-time employees squared away, but one of the issues that we kind of looked at was our part-time government employees. It looks like they would only be receiving a check for five months at 3%. So, uh, I would like us to reconsider a second check for them, uh, that would be received at the end of the fiscal year on June 30th. That way, they would receive the 3% for the full year of their, their service. And I guess I need to make a, uh, motion to amend what we went through budget.
So, hang on one second. Let me vote on hers. All in favor for bringing the water districts here, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And can I do those like one per month? Is that okay? Instead of, that way, it won't drag you out. We'll do one per month. Uh, two of them may be a little quick, so I maybe get two of them in. But I'll start out with the water authority, uh, next month, since that's the one that's maybe probably crucial for everybody. So, we'll start with that one first, and then we'll work our way down. That's good.
What Commissioner Rich is proposing probably needs to go to next month, so we have a resolution.
Okay.
In writing, but we can fix it. I'm sorry. Well, I think it already has, but not that part. He may want to take it through budget and bring.
Yeah, my recommendation, would it go back through budget?
Okay.
Next month.
There you go.
And I think, just so we got everybody, real quick, what 3% is what you guys gave to full-time people? So, you're good to go there?